Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the first of two workshop meetings this evening. The first one is a joint meeting between the Washtuggle City Council and the Port of Camas-Washuggle Commissioners in regards to some presentations on Highway 14 and some Phase Twos of the improvements towards the highway itself. So we've got some representatives from the State Department of Transportation with us, plus some of our own staff who have been involved in the process. With that, Rose, would you like to call the roll, please?
Yes. Councilmember Russell.
Here.
Councilmember Greenlee.
Here.
Councilmember McDaniel.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Plensky.
Here.
Councilmember Lindsay.
Here.
Councilmember Shoemaker. Commissioner McCray Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Lampton.
Here.
And Commissioner Ward.
Here.
Thank you, Rose. We did get a message from Councilmember Shoemaker that he is ill this evening and would not be able to make the meeting. Bill, anything from the port before we get started?
Anything from us?
Mm-hmm.
No, we're just here to learn.
Okay, perfect. With that, we've got the first opportunity for anybody from the public that would like to address council before we get started into the presentation. We do still have an opportunity at the end of the meeting as well, so with that, we're going to go right to the presentation on Highway 14, conceptual design, the city and Washington State Department of Transportation. Jim or Dave, which one of you are going to take this one?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just have a couple of quick comments and then I'll turn it over to Jim. Just want to say welcome as well to our port commissioners. Thank you for being here. We also have Bart and Chris from Washington Department of Transportation. You've met both Bart and Chris before, so appreciate them being here. Dave Rip is here as well, on the staff. As you recall, council, we scoped the firm Parsons Brinkerhoff to look at Phase Two of our Highway 14 design. And that's really kind of the recent history that we've had. So what we're going to do tonight is pick up kind of where we left off from our last presentation, but we will introduce some of the recent history to make sure that we're all up to speed again and remind ourselves of where we're at in terms of the project. Then we will talk about some different options that have ensued since the last workshop we had. We'll look at what some of the costs and impacts of those options are so that we can vet through that together. We have a recommendation at the administrative level about an option to pursue, and it is our goal this evening that we would hopefully walk away with consensus so that we can begin to gel around a concept and begin to work the long process to begin design, environmental work, and secure funding for this important project. But as you know, we need to get consensus and to gel around a concept so that we can take that forward. So just very briefly on the recent history, I mentioned this right at the outset, we had a joint project with the port in partnership where we both funded some professional services to take a look at what our options would be for this project in Phase Two. And as you'll recall, we asked them to look at a number of different things, one of which was a grade separated crossing over the railroad, which is an important component at 27th. And we did that very specifically, and we'll get to that issue in a little more detail later, but that's been on our... And if I can, just, we're going to do a lot of back and forth in this presentation just to kind of bring everybody up to speed on what was talked about. This is just a link to show you real quick what that 27th Street grade separation would look like. I'm sorry, Dave. It's okay. Thank you for reminding me that we were doing that. The...this has been in our plan for years, I understand, the city of Washtuggle's facilities plan. It's actually been the number-one project on our CFP, so that's why we included that in the scoping for Parsons. So that was a fixed thing that they had. In terms of the length for the segment of the state facility that we were looking at, it was from River Road to 32nd. So that was another piece of the scoping that we gave to the consultant, basically, for the rest of the project. And then there was significant coordination and partnership that went on with multiple meetings with our colleagues at Washington State Department of Transportation before, with the Regional Transportation Council as well. Our modeling needs to be consistent with the regional modeling. We're integrated into that system, so that was all part of that. Yes. Just show some of the things that we were also talking to them about in terms of scoping this project. As you know, we've planned for growth, up 32nd and a little bit toward the east, and we have in our urban area, something like that oval. We've identified jobs lands there, so that we want this project to meet the goal of providing infrastructure and connectivity to serve that area. And then, of course, we have a significant asset in the port, and that's the lower oval. And this project needs to provide infrastructure and connectivity to enhance that and to help bring that online as quickly as we can to complement the things that the port's already doing. And we have the railroad tracks, of course, that we have to get across. I think right...I'll turn it over to Jim now to kind of get into more of the details, but before I do that, as you recall, at the end of the last work session, we had a recommendation from Parsons that was presented to the council. And there was some concern, there was skepticism about the efficacy of that recommendation. And as you recall, council, it centered mostly around why 27th, why not 32nd, some of the details around how some of the movements would happen and how we would get from one place to the other, and was it really meeting our goals? And I believe at that time, we weren't able to adequately address that. And so that's why...excuse me. That's why we've undertaken to explore additional options and to really make sure that we vetted those issues for you. There was also skepticism in the community, we heard from community members, that weren't convinced that the proposed option for Parsons was the appropriate option. So that's why we're back. We heard that feedback, and we want to make sure that we've given you good information and that we fully vetted this for you so that you could be comfortable and reach consensus around an option. So with that, I'd just like to go over real quickly just the eight alternatives that Parsons brought forward at that meeting so that we can review those and put some context to this presentation. And the first one was just some localized improvements, and I'll try to link to these real quick so you can see it on the map. So you see Ford Street here in the port area, and then you see the 27th Street extension there. There would be some Addy, eight Addy Street improvements as well, according to this radius path to get this circulation in the port. And the next alternative that Parsons came up with was a half-diamond interchange there There's eight of these, so I'm going to kind of speed these up. I think we've seen these before, but just to add some context here, we wanted to show you again exactly what Parsons did. And really, their work has helped us out quite a bit doing this further study and further investigation. So you see this other alternative here, three, and then a split diamond at 27th slash 32nd And the fifth alternative was a full diamond interchange at 32nd with the Ford Addy improvements. We had multiple discussions with Department of Transportation. We really appreciate Bart and Chris's input through this whole process. And they will speak about some of the options that we came up with a little bit later. So there's a full diamond interchange at Washtuggle River Road, and this is an important intersection here, SR14, with Washtuggle River Road, as far as the state's concerned. There's some level of service issues already there, so that needs some improvement. So these are what Parsons looked at, at least initially, and then they had a recommendation for us, and this was their final recommendation. And this is kind of an unconventional split. You have the Washtuggle River Road here with the half diamond there, you have the frontage roads in between, and then this is 27th Street with the Ford extension and the 27th Street grade separation over the railroad tracks. So some of our project goals, we wanted to talk about those at least initially. One is, you know, number one is safety for us. I mean, when we talk about safety, it's out on the highway, it's on our road system as well. One of the aspects of that is to get our fire department, our police department, over those railroad tracks so that they can respond to emergency calls. And so that was a big piece of the safety element we were talking about. But there is this weaving that goes on too, on the highway, and I don't know if some of you are familiar with that term, but this is an example of weaving that goes on. So if we get an interchange and another interchange fairly close to each other, we have issues with this person, he's in the far right lane, he wants to get over the left lane so he can get over the bridge, and then we have a truck here that wants to get off. And so you have this weaving pattern here. So those are some of the considerations we're looking at. So throughput, level of service, you know, obviously, the time spent in an intersection, you know, at a red light, you know, the traffic that we all experience during the day or during the peak hour, you know, if you're headed to work in the morning or coming back in the evening. So that's one of the project goals, is to make sure that we have that traffic circulation and our level of service doesn't fall below our standard. Then we have enhanced access to the port. This was a big consideration with all of these, and I'll just go through and put a slide up that shows kind of some circulation patterns here. It kind of gets kind of messy, but we do have a lot of the road system in place down there at the port right now. We just need some improvements to make. This is non-existent here right now, but it, you know, this is just a conceptual, obviously, but there would be some improvements needed to get into this port facilities down here to open that up. But we do have, you know, index, and, you know, we've got 27th Street that comes down, possible access here, you know, if it was at 27th. So there's all kinds of infrastructure already in place. This right here is the Ford Street extension, and I just kind of wanted to show you that just to show that there is that circulation in and around this whole area here. So and then access property for development. You know, if we look at all the properties, that's one of our goals, is to make sure that we can develop those and serve those properties, get trucks in, get, you know, customers into those areas. Oops. Hit the wrong button there. I'll go back real quick. So we wanted to make sure that we had another grade separation of the railroad tracks. We've been talking about this for some time. As David mentioned earlier, it's been in our facility plan and recently our tip update. It needs to be a concept that's economically feasible, that has limited impacts to the community. You know, obviously, we care about our stakeholders, and we want to make sure that there's low impact to the community. And it fits our transportation capital facility plan, like I said, and David mentioned before, you know, these things have to fit into that plan. So we came up with some different options or concepts, as I label them here, and we're going to go over these real quickly at first and then get into some detail a little bit later. Here's a concept that I had at least a few people come into my office and talk about, and that was the full diamond at River Road and then over here at 32nd Street. If we do have a full diamond here and we make this a significant intersection with SR14, it would really make sense to go over at this point here, at 32nd Street. So this is the impacts of doing that, going over at 32nd Street. Now, whether we go over or under the tracks, there's still quite a few impacts here. We would want to definitely route Evergreen around this area. We wouldn't want to have part of the traffic going under and then over because it creates conflicts here and here. So really, reroute Evergreen to get up over the railroad tracks, you can see there's a tremendous amount of impact there to one of our commercial centers here.
Can we go back to that, Floyd?
Sure.
Just taking questions as we go. I was wondering what the problem was, if you're going over the railroad tracks with 32nd, of continuing Evergreen underneath the overpass?
Well, you don't have connectivity here if you go underneath of it, so you still have traffic coming on Evergreen, or on Evergreen would still need to go up or head north on 32nd or south on 32nd.
Yeah.
So there's no intersection there.
Mm-hmm. But the through traffic would be, could go through.
That's correct. So you'd want to make sure that this was, you know, an access point for traffic, you know, headed up or down the hill.
Yeah, thank you.
So we'll get back to the table here. This is Concept B, and this is a split diamond at River Road and 27th with collectors, distributors, and a grade separation of the railroad tracks at 27th. If I can just get my cursor to appear there. Oops. Oh, there we go. Sorry about that. Please bear with me. All right, there's Concept B. So this concept, you can see, we have some frontage roads running between 27th and River Road. We've got some grade separation at 32nd and River Road there, and then we've got some access off of the highway and then the Ford Addy improvements. Concept C. We'll have a chance to go back through these in a little bit more detail. These are full CD lines, frontage roads, and we have the grade separation at 27th again and the Ford Addy improvements.
What do CDs stand for?
It's a...CD lines are the collector distributors. Thank you. I almost lost it.
It's a one-way road going one direction on each side of the freeway. It's separated. You can't have driveways off it if you want, you don't have.
Right.
It's kind of a frontage road, but it's a two-lane road, it's a one-way road.
So these are the collector distributors we're talking about here, and they run in between these changes so you, you know, you don't have access there to the highway. So impacts and costs of Conceptual B. Actually, I got ahead of myself again. I apologize again here. Let me back up to the table. Okay, so we have Concept C here, and as we said, you know, these are the collector distributor lines, and then we move back to, we have one more concept to go over, and that's Concept D. And this is basically, the difference here was to extend A Street all the way through. This is Pendleton, and extend A Street all the way to Addy. This is already in our facility plan, so this will probably happen someday either way, but these are the diamond interchanges here. All of these options, I think, we had discussed at different times. I think there was many people that came in and wanted us to look into these options. So that's exactly what we did, and we looked at all of these options, and then we'll talk about those in a little bit more detail now.
Jim, on 32nd and the crossover.
Mm-hmm.
That's the same concept it was in B as well. The issues you had there with...
Right, the weaving, yes. So now we'll get into a little more detail here, and this is where I could ask Bart and Chris to come into the conversation as far as, you know, what the impacts would be for each of these options and possibly talk about safety issues, things like that. For this option A, as Dave mentioned before, you know, there's possibility to have some weaving issues. I think the biggest part of this option and the most impact that we would see is up here with our commercial center at Safeway. If we do this diamond interchange, you know, it makes sense to go over here, so there's a lot of impact involved with doing that. And as we mentioned before, here's the impact that we have. As we look at this, this is basically 20 properties affected, and most of that is structural. These are structures that would have to be mitigated for, a total of $7,464,000 in right So we look at some of the costs here, and we have some interchanges here at River Road and 32nd, $80 million. The grade separation of the railroad tracks. If we went over the railroad tracks with a bridge, it would be around $18 million, and $33 million for an underpass. There would be property owner mitigation in right of way, and, as I mentioned, around $7 million. So multiple property takes an impact to the community for a total of $105 to $120 million. And as we go through these, these are conceptual estimates only. We don't have any permitting done or any design work done at this point. It's just conceptual. So now I just want to go back and ask Chris and Bart if they have any thoughts on this configuration here.
Mitch, could you go ahead and kick the two doors closed?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure. The spacing between Washtuggle River Road and...I'm getting a cold, so I apologize.
You do.
Sure. Someone else can touch it. Whatever I said.
Hello?
Yeah.
The distance between Washtuggle River Road and 32nd is just under a mile. The distance between Washtuggle River Road and 27th is just under two-thirds of a mile. We have some standards that require at least a mile spacing between interchanges, but we really don't care that much about the standards. What we care about is how things actually function. And what we've seen is if it's less than a mile between crossroads, and you try to put interchanges at both locations, you're going to have, one, safety issues and, two, congestion issues. And we've seen that. A good example is I-205, Mill Plain and 14, SR14, that zone there. That's over a mile long. Again, 32nd, Washtuggle River Road's less than a mile, and we have some major issues there. We're spending a lot of money trying to fix that problem. We have those problems in a lot of areas. And really, what is it that showed, you have folks trying to get on the freeway, kind of looking back over their shoulder to merge in, people in front of them trying to slow down to get off, and so you have a safety issue, but you also have congestion issues, people slowing down and speeding up. So that's the main reason we have a turn. We aren't saying, I wouldn't say that an interchange at 32nd and Washtuggle River Road isn't doable. It is, it's possible. One of the challenges is going to be, if you were to do that...I don't want to get yours, Jeremy. The ramps coming on here, oops, mine isn't too bright. Would you have to go across 27th, and you probably wouldn't merge in yet with the new ramps going to the west? Yeah, right there. So you probably have to build separate bridges, and that's going to be a dilemma, because you really want to get those ramps on the freeway as soon as possible to give you more distance to get on and other people to get off as they're getting off at Washtuggle River Road. So you may have to tear down the existing structure at 27th and just build a wider one instead of separate sidelines. I guess I will take yours after all. We're doing something similar on, at St. John's. If you've been to St. John's and Highway 500, what we're building right now, we have separate ramps off to the sides and their own separate bridges. We can do that separate from the main line, SR500, that stays where it is, but it costs a bunch more money. And, you know, money's, I'm sure, an issue for you like it is everywhere. So that's a challenge. There's no chance to put a standard diamond interchange at 27th and one at 15th, Washtuggle River Road. Way too close together, will not fit. We just can't allow it. So that's, some of these things we know that are off the table, some stuff are, you know, there's different ways to do it. There's ways to mitigate some of it. Another example of problems or how different entities deal with these issues differently is over in Portland, you know, on I-205 in Vancouver, again, Mill Plain, SR14, we put interchanges in, and they're a little bit too close together now, 35 years after it's been built, or whatever the number of years it has been, 30 years since it's been built. As traffic has increased over the years, it's getting worse and worse and worse. In Portland, they already had the growth of the community when they put 205 in. I actually grew up over there. So in Portland, what they did at Gleason to Burnside to Stark, they didn't have an off-ramp at Gleason and then an on-ramp right afterwards, and then an off-ramp at Stark and then a right, and then an off-ramp at Burnside, et cetera. They had one off-ramp at Gleason, and you get up there, you go stop at Gleason, then you take a CD line up to Stark and Washington, then you can get back on afterwards. In between, they have something, you know, some options as well. Same thing coming the other way, same situation at Powell and Division. You know, one off-ramp going south to Division, and it splits off and goes underneath and goes to Powell as well. It's because they're too close together. You just can't do it safely. They already had the high volume, they already had the built community that we didn't have, and so they learned and they did it right to begin with. Again, our systems worked pretty well for the last several years, well, until the last several years on 205. But anyway, that's one of the things we've learned is, this and this is just too close together to have standard diamond interchanges. That's one of the reasons that talked about putting a CD line in, or a one-lane road on this side connecting them and a one-lane road on this side. You don't have those people coming on and coming off and having a safety issue as well. But also the benefit of having a separate road, lots of different configurations for it, but it provides that access for your businesses that you really need to grow the area, to get people in and out of the businesses. That's one of the benefits of the CD line or frontage road on each side. I think you guys probably know better than I do the dilemma of 27th coming up... I think you guys probably know better than I do the dilemma of 27th coming up and over and connecting into, you know, the north side. You have this dilemma, same thing on 32nd, different set of issues, but very challenging. And obviously, that ties into 27th and 32nd. Which one do you do, do you do them, you know? We can't tell you what the answer is, but I'll try to put this in perspective for you. How many of you were here, I know I was, in 2000 when we started talking about in '98? When we started talking about the solutions to address SR-14 at Union and at Second and Sixth? How many, how many council members were on council? How many, how many commissioners were on the commission? So kind of the point being is, kind of whatever you decide today, isn't necessarily what we're going to build. What we, what we talked about back then, we actually developed and redeveloped in 2003, 2005, 2008. We came up with a better plan, kept on working it. The general concept is, I think, that everybody agreed to the council and the commission back at that time, including campus city council members, was we needed to do something, we needed something to address safety, needed to address something to address the jobs and access to the community, to get people back and forth, home to business and et cetera. And the general concept was freeway, something needs to be done with Highway 14. Something like an interchange and something like, at that point in time, four-laning. This section of 14 doesn't need to have four lanes per se, like we do to the, to the west. It's because you have a lot of growth potential, but it's not so much, the gorge can't be developed. Yeah. And so you have a relatively limited amount of growth. And two lanes without stoplights can easily handle the volume. So you really don't need to address that. So your interchanges or whatever, it's going to be quite a bit different than what looks, what it looks like to the east, which is good because it's probably going to be quite a bit cheaper. You don't have to build four-lane over crossings. You can just build maybe two-lane over crossings. But the kind of the point I'm trying to make is, you don't necessarily need to agree and say, that is the solution. You know, every last little connection is just this way. Because whatever you agree to today isn't probably, I'll bet a lot of money, it's not going to be what's going to be built in the future. It's the concepts that you want to try to support so you can get funding for the next set of issues. I'm not downplaying, you know, your input, I'm not downplaying other stuff, but I've, you know, I have 100 ongoing projects right now at any one point in time. Cover seven counties, been doing this for a long time. And try, the point is, you don't need to get too worried about the last, every last little detail of it. I think you're trying to get general support for some general concepts, even though they may not be perfect. It'll be time to work on them as you go to the next phase of the project.
Thank you, Bart. I'll run through this real quick. So this is concept B that we came up with. And this is a split diamond at Washouga River Road and 27th. Collector distributors in between. And then we have the grade separation of the railroad tracks at 27th Street. And then we have the Ford and Addy improvements as well. This is a little bit different right here. Really, the big problem with, with just the diamond here coming across to 27th directly is we have a spur track, a railroad spur track that runs through here. So if, if traffic got off the highway there and the train was on the track, it would back up out on the highway. So that was one of the concerns, having a full diamond interchange here. And then also, we've got the collector distributors here that run between, and the frontage roads in between. And then we've got grade separation at Washouga River Road and at 32nd as well. This, this signal here would be intertwined into the tracks so that if there was a train in close box city, there'd be a right turn. And as Bart said, this is, you know, all conceptual at this point, as far as major concepts. So we'll get into some of the details here. Bart, did you want to speak to this before I move on? Similar to...
There, there's lots of varieties and, and, you know, options, suboptions that we can look at, and we, and we would in the next phase of any of these to basically identify what are the different pros and cons. Lots of trade-offs you can make in, in, in all these different designs. And on this one, I could think of a dozen different things we could do, that each one of them has pros and cons. And it, and as we go through the process in the future, the next phase of the project, those will probably be looked at more in depth. So again, it's, I don't have too much heartburn thinking, well, this really won't work quite right, and this won't be very good. Well, again, we have lots of solutions in our, in our bag that we can apply to make it better. So, you know, something like this, something like, you know, there's a couple of them that are pretty close. It is what I think is probably going to be close to it to balancing all the different needs of providing access, providing the throughput, providing the safety, et cetera. We want to have the divided highway no matter what, which option we choose. Barrier down the middle, up through 32nd. And we're looking at a separate project, separate from all of yours, just a safety standalone project to do something like that in the interim. I don't think we've actually shared that with you, but we've been asked to scope that project. Whether or not it gets funded in the next two years or four years, six, we aren't really sure. But safety's, you know, critical priority, and it's, it's really pennies on the dollar. It's really typically a low-cost solution. Again, to eliminate, to reduce the chance of head-on collisions through the corridor. Still have the intersection of 15th if we go forward with something like that.
So this is kind of an option B one, and we threw this in here just to, just to show you, you know, some of the, some of the options or conceptuals that people have brought forward to us since Parsons did their presentation. We don't need to spend too much time on that. But this is what I was talking about, the spur track there on 27th. If you see, you know, traffic coming off the highway, they'd have to cross right here to tie you to 27th. So that, that track is definitely a big concern. And then this is just showing the extension over the railroad tracks at 27th, and then the Ford improvements there, extending Ford Street through the, through the port. So these are some of the costs associated with right-of-way acquisition. And these are just based on the 27th Street extension and the grade separation of the railroad tracks. So we're looking at about $1 million there. And if we get into some more of the cost for concept B, some of the interchanges, we're looking at possibly $40 million for Washouga River Road and 27th. Grade separation of 32nd Street, that would be the, the, of SR-14, it would be grade separation of SR-14 at 32nd. And that would be $26 million. Collector distributors, another $10, or $10 million. 27th Street grade extension over the railroad tracks, $15 million. There's property owner mitigation at last slideshow, approximately $1 million. Ford Street extension, approximately $4 million. And all these, these numbers are, like I say, they're conceptual right now. But we did use a lot of the information that Parsons provided us to come up with some of these figures. So that, that work did not go to waste, that's for sure. Addy Street, 27th Street improvements, another $2 million. And that would just pull the radius out, those different intersections on, on Addy. This would be a little bit less impacted community, or a lot less impacted the community, for a total of $98 million.
So out of that, it seems to me as though you could, as funding comes in over time, you can do, you know, this, and then later on do that, and later on do the other thing. You don't have to do grade separation at 32nd upfront as part of one big project. And piece-milling, kind of mixed match, as you get funding and as you look at what your priorities are. You can help decide with the state legislator, and federal delegation of, and when you get a certain amount of money, what are the priorities? What do you want to do first, what do you want to do second, what do you want to do third? And, and most of the options are that way. I think you have, you'll have a lot of latitude to figure out what, what do you want to do first, what do you want to do second, what do you want to do third? Because in all likelihood, you're not going to get the same level of funding in the future from the state or from Congress as you have in the past. I doubt that you can come up with your own funding sources that, you know, separate, do that funding type of project.
Yeah, that's a really good point, Bart. And later on in the presentation, we'll, we'll talk about phasing a little bit. And each of these options, we wanted to make sure that we could phase them in. So this is the full CD lines, grade separation of the railroad tracks at 27th Street, and then the Ford Addy improvements. And again, Bart, if, if there's anything you want to add to, to this, please, please chime in. You can see the collector distributors that run the full length of the corridor. And then we have some grade separation of SR-14 here, and still have this concept of the railroad tracks.
So you really don't have to do grade separation.
Right.
This is optional. You can have, I'm not sure you can have right in, right out, but these are off-ramps, you can't have right in, right out. But that's not necessary. It's something you can decide to do. It's a little more circuitous, a little more problematic to get trucks in and out. Do you have room to turn left here with railroad tracks and type area through here? You can, you can mitigate that problem. In other words, trucks from the port area coming up and turn left, there isn't underneath existing bridge and the railroad track room to put a full turn, uh, turn line in. Just it's problematic. There's ways to squeeze it in, there's ways to make some other changes. We can shift this a little bit further to the north, and have it a little more loud in this, come down, provide that room for trucks. There's a lot of those details you'll work on later on, in the phase. And, and looking at your money, since money's obviously a critical issue, that'd be something that I'd look at, you know, postponing. From a, from a Parsons perspective, we really don't care. It's your choice of how you get across the railroad track. We just want to make sure that whatever we choose to do and how we incorporate it into the freeway, SR-14, that, as mentioned earlier, that we don't have backups on the three lanes of the freeway. People are zipping by 50 miles an hour, 60 miles an hour, and all of a sudden, there's a backup because of a railroad issue. So I think that's our biggest concern is, are those backups. As far as where you carry across and how you deal with that internal circulation, it's really up to you guys.
So again, this, this just describes the impacts of going over at the railroad tracks at, at 27th Street. This is, this is the, all the impacts can, together, combined, some similar, similar expenses, expenses here. Collector distributors, $20 million. On the interchange at River Road and 32nd. These are just for the ramps. That's, I'm sorry, right here, that's just for the ramps. It's $14 million. SR-14 grade separation at Washouga River Road and 32nd Street. That would be approximately $52 million. So that's getting, getting up and over the highway at those points. And then total, total cost there, conceptual cost, $108 million, depending on the configuration. A little bit less impacted the community and opens up access to the port properties, or access to properties north of SR-14, excuse me.
To put it in perspective, I think you've probably seen our signs out, but versus existing, you know, freeway lighting project is $57 million total for all phases. But that was, I'll say old money, that, we're getting really good bids, you know, because of recession, et cetera. You can't guarantee that to happen in the future. But there's a lot of work. So this could be high, but again, if you look at 10 years, when you're hoping to get money for construction, and inflation's going to occur over time, I could see it being, you know, it's a big dollar amount, more than a few tenths of millions, for sure.
I just suddenly get through the presentation first so we don't start getting off. Did you write it down there?
So here's, here's concept D. And this is another concept. As, as we mentioned before, this is, this is Addy, connecting A Street to Addy here. This is in our capital facility plan. You can see some of the, the properties that, that would benefit by being opened up. Any of these configurations would benefit here, I think, near Pendleton. Here's, here's Pendleton Fields where we have some really going on. This is, this is Pendleton Street Plan, the port down here. And then, and then this is the Stevenson property where the dog park is. And, you know, all this lead up to our, our job center up north. Any thoughts on this one, Bart, before I move on? So again, 32nd Street. There's, there is some impact here with this, with this extension from A to Addy. And that's about a $4 million road that runs through. But like I said, here's Pendleton Fields, kind of the breakup of where that would come across. And total, total for this would be about $109 million. And impacts to Pendleton property and Pendleton Fields there. But not really any structures involved. There may be a couple of structures that would be impacted. So when we move on, this is, this is the recommendation that we have for you. This is, this is the half diamond at River Road and 27th with collector distributors. This is our concept B. So this is what we're recommending now, and we feel that this meets, meets the goals of this project. This is kind of a side-by-side or with, with option B and what Parsons recommended down here. So really, the difference is, is this piece right here getting on and off the highway. We thought was important, so we made this the jog to get on, so that would eliminate the problems with the railroad tracks. This grade separation here and the CD lines, they really do eliminate the weaving problems that you might have, so. You can see those side-by-side. So these, we, we feel that concept B meets the, the project goals. Like I said, safety, it eliminates some of the weaving that goes on. It gets us over the railroad tracks for emergency services. The throughput is there, level of service, it improves our level of service. There was tremendous amount of modeling that was done with Parsons Brinkerhoff. And we used, like we said before, the RTC model as, you know, they extend out a few years in population growth. They look at zoning and things like that. So this helps our level of service. It enhances access to the port. It increases access for property development. We talked about that northeastern corner of the city, job growth down there, and then also the port facility expansion. It talks about, we, we actually have the grade separation of the railroad tracks that I mentioned earlier, and that's part of a safety piece. And it also helps out with level of service. You know, if we have a train that's, that's going through town right now, it almost bisects our community. You know, you can build a wall there, and traffic backs up onto the highway right now. So this is a concept that's feasible, economically feasible, and it has much more limited impacts to the community if we, if we go over the railroad tracks at 27th versus 32nd. And it fits our transportation capital facility plan.
Something else that I could add, and maybe you'd want to comment on this, but it looks like that alternative, or concept B lends itself most readily to a phased approach where we don't have to do any backtracking. Is that true, Bart?
Yes, yeah, that's what we talked about when we met with Debbie Dodd as well. Starting at River Road and then working our way east. You know, River Road and 27th improvements could be tied in, and then the 32nd could kind of follow when funding was available.
Right. We'll, we'll, we'll get to the phasing piece here close to the end. But yeah, definitely can be phased, and makes sense to do that. So this, this concept, you know, or these concepts have been in planning for many years. And we've been moving forward, at least staff has, at the city of Washouga. You know, we've been talking about, you know, what we do at 32nd Street. And we, we've kind of had, the 27th Street extension has been the, well, it's been the number one project for us for the last few years. It's in our capital facility plan. And it's, it's also in the recent TIP update that council provided us. And also RTC has looked at that, and we are actually on the Metropolitan Transportation Plan as far as 27th Street extension over the railroad track. So we have a couple of grants that I'd like... So we have a couple of grants that I'd like to tell everybody about. If you haven't heard, we have a grant with the State Utility Commission, and that's a twenty thousand dollar grant for pedestrian improvements. That would be on the west side of Thirty Second Street. As you cross over the railroad tracks, there's currently no sidewalk there. So we're going to move on those improvements. Thirty Second Street Sidewalk Improvement Grant with CDBG. We received that this year. So we're, we're planning on moving forward with those sidewalk improvements. Thirty Second Street Intersection Improvement from STP, and that's the Surface Transportation Program. That's nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So we've really improved that intersection at Thirty Second thinking that, you know, we would eventually go over at Twenty Seven. So we've been moving forward with that idea in mind, and our, you know, our planning has been moving forward. So as it says here in the bullet, all funds would need to be returned if we did think about going over at Thirty Second Street, which is, you know, definitely an option. You know, things change, plans change over time. But just wanted to give everybody some insight onto, into what, you know, staff has been working towards these many months. So option B, as I said before, it's on the RTC ten-year priority list, at least on the preliminary priority list. So we're pretty happy that that's on the priority list, at least at this time. That could change as well. I mean, it's in the CFP and Twenty Seventh Street Extension over the railroad tracks was our number one project in 2011 with our TIP update. So here, now we talk a little bit about phasing. This is an important piece of all the options. We wanted to make sure that they could be phased. And these are just some, you know, possible phasing options. You know, we could do the improvements at Addy Street and extension of Ford Street first. Get that circulation going in and around the port. Fairly low cost. Design and construct Twenty Seventh Street Extension, so getting us over the railroad tracks. As we think about, you know, the coal trains and some of the train traffic through the corridor, it's definitely going to increase in the future, so we need to get over those tracks. Design and construct the Washougal River Road and Twenty Seventh Street interchange with frontage roads. So that would be that, that piece to the west. And then the last piece to the east of Twenty Seven, design and construct Thirty Second. SR14 grade separation and the east ramps at Twenty Seventh Street interchange. So with that, we'll, we'll get on to, you know, what happens next with this. You know, we need support to move forward with, with some of those grant opportunities that we talked about on Thirty Second Street. You know, this has been a result of many studies over the years. Like I said before, it's on preliminary RTC's ten-year priority project list. So that's the Regional Transportation Committee. It is recommended that funding be signed immediately to allow improvements to advance. I mean, this process is going to take a long time, obviously. So we still need to go through design. We still need to go through permitting. So it would be important to look for those funding opportunities as they come and be prepared for those if they do arise. And it is recommended, like I said before, that some of the planned improvements that we have in place, the Thirty Second Street intersection and sidewalk improvements, we move forward with those. And then obviously, you know, a phased approach with Addy Street, extension of Ford Street, Twenty Seventh Street grade separation, as we talked about before. And, you know, with that, these projects would improve the transportation system and we feel would benefit our community, improve safety and have much less impact. So with that, we'll open it up for some questions.
Is that the road to Oz?
This is, this is, that's the city on the hill, Washougal.
Mayor, before we jump into questions, if I could just make a couple summary comments just to try to tie in from the beginning. As we mentioned, we have the presentation from Parsons. The recommendation that you have from us is very similar to their option A, sort of an option eight plus that took care of some of the other issues that came up. One of the main pieces of concern or skepticism, if I could say that, was why aren't we doing Thirty Second? And that's our arterial that gets up the hill. That's what gets us to our new jobs ground. Why aren't we crossing at Thirty Second and intersecting with Highway 14 at Thirty Second? We took that seriously. We studied that further beyond how Parsons had dismissed those options for a variety of reasons. We looked at what would this really look at, look like? What would the options be? What would the impacts be? It is possible to do it. You saw one version of how it could look. That's not the only way that it could look. But no matter how we do it, it will have significant impact in that general vicinity to many properties. It will cost more because of those impacts, but maybe more important than the cost are those, are the actual impacts that we would experience. If we had it to do over again and we had a clean whiteboard and we had Thirty Second going up the hill and we had Twenty Seventh and we had River Road and we didn't have a spur track, we would, we would do that differently. And we probably would design the intersection and the grade separation with the railroad to go up the arterial that takes us to the new jobs lanes. And we would do all of those things. Of course, that, that makes intuitive sense. Given the constraints that we have, it's our, it's recommendation that we need to maintain the Twenty Seventh grade separation. That's currently on the facilities plan that was identified in previous years as the priority. And then from that, the split diamond approach with the CD lines or the frontage roads as a way to best balance all of these competing priorities. And I think it gets good access to the port. It gets us, not immediately directly, but it gets us up the hill on Thirty Second. It gets us over the tracks. It opens up development opportunities more readily north of Highway 14 in the Twenty Seventh Street vicinity, all of which are priorities of the council I know and the commission around economic development. So that's really the basis for our recommendation. Thank you for being patient through a very long presentation, but we wanted to make sure that you understood the level of analysis and experimentation, I guess you would, that went into this. Really want to thank Jim for really a Herculean effort that he put in on this project. He spent a lot of time on this and with great assistance from our colleagues at the State Department of Transportation as well. It's very helpful. So now, comments and questions and hopefully consensus is what we're hoping to have.
Bart, a quick question for you in regards to option B. You had mentioned possibly through the phasing and/or through the conclusion of the project itself, not necessarily doing those separated crossings at Thirty Second, potentially leaving those out?
Well, yeah, there's lots of options and sub-options. What I would take away from this is the support from the city in the Port Commission of moving forward with the project along SR14 and, and Twenty Seventh and Thirty Second, whatever you guys agree to, that has some type of interchange at Fifteenth, has some type of CD lines for connectivity for future growth, et cetera, access, et cetera. And the exact configuration isn't necessarily, you know, this, this, this or this. That will change over time. It will change as you guys change, it will change as we change and as the area grows. And it should change. So exactly how you, you know, you can, it's a benefit, I think, have a great separation. One of the questions is how do you get trucks in to get back out? How do you get folks from here to go up into the community? Do they all have to come through here? Is that going to suggest here? There's a lot of ways to mitigate that. I think that's a level of detail that you don't necessarily need to solve today because it's probably going to change tomorrow.
I guess my question is, if we, if we chose to hold off on that grade separation at Thirty Second, from your standpoint at WashDOT, what happens to Thirty Second at that point? Do we still have a left-hand turn with the other safety improvements that you've got going in? Does that just block that whole intersection?
So good, good question. So again, it has to do with phasing, but let's assume the first phase or, this may be the first phase, that may be the first phase, but the first phase is interchange here and, or half diamond interchange in these frontage roads or CD lines. Then instead of turning left in front of high-speed traffic coming up from the gorge, you get off here and you come here and you go left here. That's how you do it. So we eliminate that left. We may leave right in, right out on this side until we have these ramps here, these things in. That's the table and we have a lot of latitude to have those in and out. And maybe we can connect to this. So basically you can get off here and connect to, see lots of different latitude and options that are out there that I, in the number of iterations, just magnify. Because each one has several different options and they affect positively or negatively the other options. So that's why I'm trying to emphasize enough that, you know, by taking off the table now is a view that a future council can't put it back on. But to look at the total dollar amount and insurance and total dollar amounts, not quite so challenging to look at how are we going to get a hundred and some odd million though. But I don't see that as being an absolute necessary part to provide all the other benefits you're looking for.
Okay. Thank you. Questions from council?
Just a comment, a comment on grade separation. That may be a long range. Should commend administration's staff for putting together a very cogent presentation of what makes the most sense. And I want to thank them for that. It certainly is easy to rationalize. If we ever do get to the point of having that grade separation, it's certainly going to do a lot to better connect our port and the downtown area, facilitate traffic back and forth, shopping using the downtown area as far as a shopping center and making it easier for people to get through. And I guess the last comment I have, and maybe Bart, you comment on this. WashDOT's got tremendous amount of experience with the railroads who have impacted. Because of the increasing amount of rail traffic that's going to be using that line, is there any possibility that there might be impact fees available or impact funds available from the railroads to offset the costs that I've overpassed?
Yeah, good question. This is pretty close to zero. They're their own independent nation is how I like to characterize it. They have their own laws. The laws were written centuries or two ago for them. They had all the power. They wrote the laws. The laws are still in the books. It, we're basically, kind of like Columbia were crossing, we're subservient to the river traffic. We're subservient to the railroad. They were there first. They, they have all. Not only that, the crossing, we have to be thirty feet up in the air to get over the tracks. Like twenty-three feet of vertical clearance, plus you have your girders. So it's, there's a lot of issues there. It's not that you can't get some money because if you separate crossings, eliminate a signal, gated signal, you save a little bit of money, but it's nothing in the big picture compared to the cost of putting a bridge over the top and the associated impacts. It's just not the cost of the bridge. It's, those impacts are cutting off the adjacent accesses and then having to relocate those accesses someplace else. Those are the challenges and not a very good chance of getting much money from them.
This Twenty Seventh up and over the railroad track takes you right onto Evergreen? And there's never been any mention tonight about what Evergreen would look like. Right now, it's one lane one way and one the other. How will that ever? Can you just explain what the, what the plan would be there?
Yeah, sure. You know, and like we said before, there could be many different options as far as mitigation and what that looks like. We talked about possibly, you know, two, two right turn lanes here, two left turn lanes coming up and over the tracks. We do have quite a bit of right-of-way in here along Evergreen. So definitely this, this section here would be a little bit different than we, we know it today. But there is some room there. There may have to be a few little property tanks, right-of-way acquisition here to, to make sure that traffic flows. And then also, you know, you talked about those grants that we have in place. This is going to open this intersection out here at all four of these corners. So we'll be able to get trucks in and through here and around this. We also have Thirty Second Street is on our capital facility plan to be improved eventually as well.
And can you get to the slide where you called it the jobs land? Jobs, what was it called? Because I wasn't around at the time. I'd like to see and have you describe to me those roads that are up there that you're talking about.
So in the, to the northeast of this current city limits, we have some land in the urban growth boundary. If you look at the large aerial over there, you can't really see it, but that, it's that area right there. The yellow lines that you can barely see on that map are the city limits. And then as you go to the northeast, you see a light blue line. That's our urban growth area. So that area that is encircled there has been, is now within the urban growth boundary, assigned to the City of Washougal. And the goal is that it will eventually be annexed to the city and developed once infrastructure is delivered there. And it is identified as an employment center. The zoning or the comprehensive plan designation for that is for it to be employment. So if you think fifty years from now, maybe forty, I'm not sure what it will take. But this phase of the Highway 14 project will be done. We'll have another way over the railroad tracks. Thirty Second Street will be an arterial. That will be much more significant than it is today. And there'll be robust commercial traffic and residential traffic going up and down the hill. I can't remember how many jobs, Mitch would probably know, how many jobs that are targeted for that area. But that is to be a significant employment center for the community. It wouldn't be unlike what's happened in Canvis in the past where they identified some land decades ago, have delivered infrastructure and have now seen for years and are continuing to see the fruits of that.
Like along Lake Road?
Right.
Sharp, UL.
Walter Parker and Pacific Rim Boulevard.
Right.
So can you show me on that map with your little magic pen? Where's Thirty Second and Forty Ninth?
Right. So you have, basically I can catch it up here. It's kind of hard to see, but you can see Thirty Second Street comes down, all the way down.
Okay.
Did I miss it?
That's hard to see.
SR14, Twenty Seventh.
So Thirty, Thirty Second takes you up to the top.
From here. But it would take, Thirty Second Street would be the main arterial that would take you up and back. So you would, you'd come down Thirty Second and then you could either cross the railroad tracks at that point because that crossing wouldn't be eliminated and then you could access SR14. Or if, if there was a train and we had, you know, the Twenty Seventh Street extension built, you could, you could take Evergreen and cross the railroad tracks at Twenty Seventh and access SR14. So we would have that circulation there.
Hold.
Couple of questions for, does the department have a preference? If you've got SR14, take at River Road. Do you have a preference for elevating 14 over River Road or keeping 14 and elevating River Road to get over the top?
No. It's really a number of things. Functionality, cost, trade-offs, impacts to access, impacts to businesses. So on Highway 500, just a quick example, Highway 500 at St. John's, we're doing something different than what we did at Thurston Way and something different than we did 112th. And it's because it's a different situation. And so each one, we look at the pros and cons, the cost, again, access, et cetera, to determine what's the best solution. And we'll do that in the, in the future. At this point, I don't really care. Someone, we'll make that determination when we cross that bridge.
Bullpark, how much is the SR14 St. John's project?
Fifty-seven million, about the same as this one out here.
Oh, okay.
Actually, bids came in good. I think it's just under fifty.
And recognizing that whenever you talk to the railroad about anything, their attitude is, we were here-
is we were here first, which is true, they were here before Washington was a state and those right aways were granted by the federal government, not by the state of Washington. But I'm not sure that that's true of the spur. And, and how are they, I mean, that's, that's, it's not as if you're going to be putting a long train on that, the curves just don't let you put a long train on it.
I was referencing the main line, not the spur. Spurs are a different situation.
Some of the problems at Twenty Seventh of getting, getting off of SR fourteen when you've got that spur there and the possibility that the spur could be blocked.
Right now, Paul, I mean.
Right now, so, right now, for Indus Park, we have three tenants that utilize a spur, A D S, Chimera and Fiber Web. And so at most, I'm, I speculate, out of all three companies, there's ten to maybe fifteen cars a week in there.
Yeah, I've never seen.
And so there's nothing that's, right now, and even if in future development of Star Gerewald Commerce Center and there was a rail user there, I mean, I just can't see the number of cars having an issue.
Yeah, I, that, that's kind of where I was going is I don't think I've ever seen more than five cars and a switching engine on that spur. And I think four is actually all I've ever seen. Given that, it may be possible to make a deal with the railroad that they just don't block that, that they set themselves up so that they don't have a block signal that would ever block that, that access. Have you ever heard of that kind of thing happening or working or?
Not on main line, no.
No, no.
But on spur, yeah, you get a lot more latitude. Again, I was referencing the, the main line and the ability to try to get money and all those things. But yeah, the spur, you have a lot more latitude, obviously, you know, you're dealing directly with the, the businesses that are the customers or the users of it, so. There are a lot of different, again, trying to stress, lots of different options to address these relatively small issues and there's dozens and dozens of these small issues. And I, I see that one, that's a, there's some good solutions there, that could be one of many. Physically, there's just not much room underneath the bridge and railroad track right there for getting left turn lane, but that doesn't mean you can't do other things to mitigate that.
Right, because one of my concerns is maybe I'm missing the point, but if you put up the third alternative, suppose I were coming from the gorge and I wanted to go to Town Square, how do I get there?
Take River Road. You could take Twenty Seventh as well, but you'd take River Road.
I thought that there wasn't an off ramp there. I thought we had just a split diamond at River Road.
Your red one right there takes you right down onto Addy Street.
Okay, but, but that's a C D, right?
So as I mentioned before, there's lots of options and sub-options, can't stress that enough. So right here, this specific design has an off here and conceptually you can do your business and you can go back this way and come up. We just can't have an on ramp and an off ramp in this short distance. You can have one or the other, so you can have a separate off ramp that merges into the C D line. This is a separate one-lane road that doesn't connect to Highway fourteen. It comes close to fourteen and it, and it gets off there. So if you're here, you don't actually get on fourteen, you're just in a separate road.
Right.
We can have an off ramp here going down to that for the people from the gorge to get off to go up River Road. Absolutely possible. You just can't have off and an on in that same location. We do the same thing here, again, you can't have an off and an on in the short distance, but you can have one or the other. And we can figure out what's the priority of the commission and the council at some future date if one's more important than the other and you're willing to find one or the other.
You can't have off and on, but you could have two offs?
You can have, right, you could have off here and off there, there's a lot of different latitude, but within the short distance, you just can't have both. I say that, you can add another thirty or forty million dollars. We do what we call brading ramps and I two oh five, Hundred and Twelfth Street, Mill Plain, we just built that new bridge, it's a thousand-foot-long bridge. The next phase of the project we're building in two thousand and fourteen, it's an off ramp that goes underneath that bridge, close to the one, basically right next to the one we just built, goes Hundred and Twelfth, it goes all the way up to Eighteenth Street. And so we can, we can do that, but that's eighty-four million dollars, you don't have eighty-four million to do something like that here. So there's always solutions, but again, I don't think they're viable in this situation.
And, and actually the worst case for weaving that I can think of is Fourth Plain and Mill Plain, southbound on I five.
My wife hates the one underneath I two oh five bridge, you know, trucks coming through, the cloverleaf. She, she, I mean, there's a whole bunch of them that are bad and we're kind of learning our lesson, you don't, you don't do those anymore.
If you get on I five at Fourth Plain, you have to switch, come across three lanes before you get to Mill Plain. And that's, that's nuts, but I understand the problem.
Luckily we don't have that here.
Right.
That's a hundred years from now. We don't have to worry about that.
Other questions? Dave, questions from yourself? Dave Rip?
No, I just want to make one comment when Paul was asking about the rail spur and tie up, you know, from the main line to the edge on the north side of fourteen, B N S F owns that part and then on the south side of fourteen, the port controls everything into the industrial park.
Because I'm just thinking that, that where you come off of SR fourteen and just east of Twenty Seventh, yeah, that thing and go up all the way to Addy Street and then make a left and come back, a whole lot of that is to avoid the rail spur problem, is it not?
Mm-hmm, totally.
That's the only reason.
It's the only reason, yeah.
And I just.
So there's another, there's again, ultimate unlimited number of iterations. We could just have the off ramp come here and not have a great separation, just have this through and have off here and it goes straight through and it continues on and then we don't have the issue of backing up onto the freeway if, if there's a crossing. Again, and it's, it's cheap, I mean, it's relatively inexpensive to do that type of thing. Kind of somewhat precludes, you know, this future grade separation here, but we can do that and, you know, again, and we can mix and match these, we don't have to do the exact same thing on the north side as you're on the south side. B N S F, we're giving them eight hundred million dollars of improvements to address our passenger rail program. We're still struggling after giving them eight hundred million dollars, trying to get them to agree to take the, and the benefits we're providing. So I mean, it's, it's a challenge working with the folks.
Well, take back eighty million of that part and we can.
Sorry, the legislature identified exactly where to go toward, and federal as well.
Well, they didn't show up here tonight.
And I also greatly appreciate your comments that, that the important thing here is to get, is to get a rough concept on the plan, the R T C plan, all of the, the Russians, to, to put a fine point on it, the Russians have a wonderful little aphorism, perfection is the enemy of good.
Well, I don't think we're going to go that far, but anyway. Like you say, you know, Bart, you say, you know, this is really quite fluid at this point and we don't, I mean, time tide and traffic patterns will kind of dictate where we, where we go moving forward. But again, we need to get on, we need to get on the list. And you talked about, again, these improvements off of two oh five that are scheduled to occur in two thousand and fourteen?
Correct, split halftime and interchange at Eighteenth Street, starting back from Mill Plain.
What happens in two thousand and fifteen? Do we have any funding for anything down here going forward?
Zero, but we are struggling to have money for maintaining our roads. So all the money that was generated in the oh-three nickel, the oh-five T P A, nine-and-a-half cent gas tax, all that went, bombed over a twenty-five to thirty-year period to pay for those ten years of projects. And only those ten, ten years of projects, not a single other project or a single other thing that's not on the list and the legislature's stuck with that. There's four hundred and twenty-one projects, we're going to build four hundred and twenty-one projects with that. So that's where all that money goes. Our, the remainder of the gas tax that was in place prior to oh-three, that we have less and less of leverage on it because as gas prices go up, cars get more fuel efficient, new C A P standards kick in, our revenue's going down really quick and the bill, and how far the dollar goes is going down as well. So basically, no chance for major improvement without new revenue. The legislature, the House and Senate Transportation Committees were talking about it, maybe going out again in two thousand and twelve with a vote, didn't happen, recession obviously has lasted longer than any of us wanted. They're thinking about two thousand and thirteen, if that doesn't happen, they'll be thinking about two thousand and fourteen. Have that dialogue, whether or not it happens, who knows? I guess the suggestion from your staff is figure out what you want and then get, get some concurrence and some support and then go do what your predecessors did back eight, ten years ago and provide support and then go communicate with your legislators. I can't ask a lobby, it's allowing me to ask a lobby.
Thank you for that.
Other questions from anybody? Thank you all for being here tonight. I know as Dave and Jim had noted, that this one, Concept B, is the one that's coming forward from the administration that we feel hits ninety-five percent of what we need to do and tries to keep somewhat the cost down, but also the impacts to property owners into major commercial areas that are now built, as Dave said. If everything hadn't already been in place where it was, we'd be looking at this completely differently, but the realities of today, I don't think we're prepared to go buy half of a shopping center back and try and reroute traffic and try and do all of those different things in there to, to get absolute perfection. Like I said, this hits ninety-five percent of what we were trying to do and I think it's important for us to get to, start getting to a solution, even though it may change and this may be Concept L by the time we actually get to full funding of it and moving from there. But if we do, I've got to believe that we're improving the, the end product by the time we get to that point. And there's a lot of unknowns right now. We don't know what the Stephensons are going to do with all of their property. We don't know as we move forward and we put a firm foot in the sand that says this is what we believe we're going to build and we're going to start moving towards, what really will they do with those other properties? How valuable will they become? We already know that Pendleton has a concept that they would dearly like, except for the economy and access, they would dearly love to bring off of the shelf and bring back. This helps get that circulation pattern that they need. One quick point, this Concept B certainly does not eliminate the option of moving A Street all the way through those Pendleton properties and the Pendleton fields. At some point, you would likely see that as those Pendleton properties begin to develop just for circulation going through there. It wouldn't just be buildings and parking lots, we would have a roadway that's going through that section in there as well. At that point, even if you're still talking four million dollars for roadway, it most likely is not four million dollars of public money going towards that roadway. There's going to be some portion that's going in there because of the other infrastructure we're going to put under that, but if it comes as part of the development, that's certainly something we put back to the developers themselves, so. Again, we're, we're looking to try and get some sort of consensus or at least a, if there are major flaws with this that, that folks just can't live with, that we know that as well so that we can begin bringing it to both entities, the port and the city, for clearer ratification to, to start putting us back on those lists for funding for this portion itself. So with that, Bart, Chris, any, any last comments from either one? Chris, you like working out here well enough, you can start looking for a home here, can't you?
Sure.
We do appreciate, we certainly have the meetings coming up on Wednesday as well in regard to the phase that's happening now that are at the, that meeting is at six P M at the Best Western Hotel. Thank you for, for making time for your staff to be there as well. If there are no other questions, comments? Dave, last chance? Staff? Okay. With that, let's go to public comment if we could and any members of the public that would like to comment on what we've just gone through.
Richard Handy, excuse me, three seven zero one five Southeast, Gettysburg, Washington. These things have struck me, excuse me, I couldn't speak anymore. One, a few things have struck me, one was that there's quite a few options, still kind of fluid on how to get on and off the highway. And, you know, getting a plan that we go forward with, even though it might change over time, is an important thing. I'm, I'm concerned, I'd have to say that I, I find that Option B, a series of kind of fixes for previous mistakes or for things that weren't thought out right. And I'm, I'm thinking the biggest thing, if there's a consensus that needs to be found here, is, is it really going to be Twenty Seventh or Thirty Second where we cross over the road? Potentially, we kind of admitted in the discussion, I just heard that what we're talking about at dinner, Twenty Seventh isn't the best thing, that we kind of find ourselves in this fix. The reason, I think, originally for Twenty Seventh being a thought is that it looked cheaper to do than Thirty Second and we had that overpass right there already. It was put in place for that railroad spur, by the way. And the thought at those, that times would make a different standard on highway design was that we probably have an interchange everywhere we want one, including Twenty Seventh. Now we see that if we do very much at Twenty Seventh, it kind of takes away from the ability to have direct connections otherwise. What Paul pointed out, somebody coming from the gorge wanting to go downtown Washougal with that is just the most awkward thing. So I, I think that really right now is the time to, to look carefully at whether it's going to be Twenty Seventh or Thirty Second. Everything else probably can be altered as it moves forward, but some of the projects the city has already got and works for Thirty Second, assuming it's not going to be a crossing is kind of an example of what happens when you, you know, you go down a road so far, even if it's a wrong one, it's too late to turn back. And I'd hate, I'd hate to have to explain to somebody, talking about forty, fifty years from now, I'd hate to have to explain to somebody why the plan we were built, the impacts that were shown on the slide that was given for that Thirty Second Street crossing. I think I talked to the staff about another possible way to connect, seemed like much lower impact, I don't know if you look into that. That seemed like a, I agree, a huge impact on, on that location, the design they have, but I'm not sure that's the same design for connecting if you go over on Thirty Second. I've heard often, a couple of things that are always, you know, you're weighing these different ideas or proposals, look at the cost, you look at the impacts, rarely do I really hear you talk about the comparison of the results. And the results are still going to be here a fifty years from now.
Thank you, Richard.
Larry Keister, forty-four oh two Southeast, Setzemberg Road, Washougal. I think it's important that we get our name on the list so we have the opportunity to develop the infrastructure that especially the port and the Cellulose, Cellulose Center has the opportunity to start developing their property so there's access in and out of the port for their customers, but at least make the commitment so we're on the, you know, on Washdott's list of future development. Because it's going to, as they said, it's going to take a long time, but let's, let's make that commitment to be involved and say we are interested and let's leave it on the list this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Yes, Mike, good evening.
Good evening. Mike Norris, twenty-two forty-one G Street, Washougal. I'd like to follow up on what Richard had to say about where we're crossing with the railroad tracks at. I'd like to lobby for the Thirty Second Street crossing. I can just see a lot of problems coming up with that jog at, at Evergreen, jogging again, I can see impacts on that community at north of there, I can see a lot of traffic cutting through those streets to avoid waiting at lights, you know, I can see putting a trap, another traffic signal there. You know, we talked about, I sat in, listening. You know, we talked about, I sat in, listened to meetings about the improvements on E Street and I agreed with it because we were trying to mitigate the safety problems. Well, then if we're putting another traffic light in here, we're talking about rear-end collisions, you know, just more safer problems, if you ask me. And I don't know what Richard was talking about as far as alternatives there going across Thirty Second, but one thing that occurred to me, I mean, when he had that slide up there, there's a picture up there that showed, you know, traffic heading north coming off Evergreen Highway, kind of cutting right in through the Safeway parking lot, you know, right, because there's the Safeway as well. You know, another alternative too is if it could come underneath the overpass, come back up to a signal, you know, go left or right for that traffic. You know, and then we could take the signal out of Thirty Second there, but next to the railroad tracks. You know, it seems to me like, you know, there's, there's like an old oneset hut there to the south side, you know, that could be, E Street could move over some to make that happen. I don't know, it just seems to me like, I'd like to see that looked at a lot closer.
Thank you, Mike. Any other members of the public wishing to address the council?
Yes, I will. Jamie Morris, B Street, Brooklyn, Two Addy. So I'm right where you guys are talking, Thirty Second and Addy, every day. I'm a rookie at these meetings, so I don't even really know the goal of this, of these changes. Maybe I could get that answered first, like what is the main goal here? Because I drive every day, 14, East West, Thirty Second and Addy.
The main goal is to, one, to enhance the safety out there on Highway 14 itself. And Bart will be very interested to know what your interim pieces are in there when you get to that. But also is to provide other ways, more efficient ways for folks to be able to access both on and off of Highway 14 and for us to tie into another separated crossing over the railroad tracks. That's really the, the pieces that come in there that open that, all of those properties up.
Yeah, obviously, I agree because I have a number of times where trucks make illegal lifts and I mean, it would be nice if we could enforce them not to do that. I mean, I, you know, cars are coming and they just turn left, they don't care, and we all have to slow down, honk. So it'd be nice if there could be better enforcement, but I know that's a different meeting. But I guess I was hoping you'd leave your side up because I, I wanted to see how I would have to get on and off the freeway. It did not seem very clear to me on Option B. It just looked like a really big mess.
Are you heading towards Vancouver?
Yeah, heading westbound.
You'd likely go on the same way you are now and come off at Twenty Seventh.
Oh, so on at the same place, but then off and then just.
And then straight down Addy.
Okay. That Option B just had a lot of errors and.
Lot of colors.
It looked quite a mess, so, okay, thank you.
You bet. Thank you for being here. Anyone else that would like to make comment? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to suggest to council that we hold off on updates until after the second meeting. And if there's nothing else from our port commissioners, Connie Joe?
Just wondering if this is available, this presentation's available, is it going to be online or is it going to be sent to us?
It is available. I'm having some troubles sending it via email.
It's big.
So, yeah, it's a big file, lots of links.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I can provide that one way or another to each of you. We'll try to get it in the Dropbox if we can, if we can move it over on one of the servers.
Thank you.
Okay. If there are no other questions, we are going to adjourn this meeting. We're going to take a five-minute recess and we will return to the second council workshop at 7:40.
How do you listen to me?
This is Connie Joe, breaking the news.
What a thrill.
Universe, the common.
Yeah. Well, that's the easy.